Six is mine. Uh, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. And Esther, what do you roll call?
Uh, Mayor Bauer.
Here.
Mayor Chris M. Madrick.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Walsh.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Recarnis. We have a court.
Okay, Woody, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance and the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, just as we see in the justice of law. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one country, under God, one indivisible.
Alright, thank you. Okay, we don't have any special presentations today. Uh, and we have two people who have requested to, um, speak in the citizen comment portion. Uh, Mr. Lentz?
I'm ready for me.
I'm ready for you.
Okay. This may be something I would need to keep to when you have the workshop budget on the budget, but my understanding was last week during your presentation for the workshop, that you and council wanted to raise our taxes as much as possible that can be raised without us voting on this as force of citizen. Now, we raised it as much as we could last year at that time without being able to vote on it. All our houses, appraisals, and everything has gone up tremendously over this past year. With the new appraisal rate and with you wanting to raise our taxes, I do not understand why we need that extra money because you're gonna be bringing in extra money anyway with the previous tax rate we had at this point and that should cover any of your special projects that you have in line. So, that's just my concern. I just don't see us raising taxes at this point when our appraisal rates are going up already. You will be getting more income already on top of what we are getting already. Okay, thanks.
Um, if I can respond to that and not vote on it, would you just?
You can respond.
I can't answer?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, then next on the agenda is Mr. Ayers.
My name's Al Ayers. I live at forty-eight twenty-one Jolly Roger. I'll talk about that in a second. I'd like to talk tonight about banning alcohol on our beach. I feel it's important that we keep that in front of us. Right now, the city of Galveston is trying to close more of its beaches to parking. Alcohol was already banned on the State Park Beach and most, if not all, of the beaches to our west. As a consequence, I believe our beach is becoming one of the only beaches where parking and alcohol is going to be allowed. And it's becoming known as a party beach. I think if we could ban alcohol on the beach, it would help create a more family-friendly atmosphere. And I hear a lot of comments about enforcement amongst my circle of friends and family. But, you know, the police and everybody's worried, oh, what about Yeti cups? Well, the police can't and won't be checking everybody's golf cart and Yeti cups. I mean, if you're drinking while you're driving your golf cart, you're probably illegal anyway, but that's not for me to worry about. I think if we would put up, you know, if we pass, if we do pass that and put up some signs and once a few fines are given out, it's kind of gonna take care of itself. I mean, the word will, word will get out and it will be a lot easier for the police to enforce when they need to. I mean, it's just gonna be a tool for them to use, just one tool in their toolbox. And I think it would also help keep our beaches clean or cleaner. I was at a beach this morning about ten o'clock and I know from going there earlier that there were already people out there with their little bags as they walk, picking up. I finally had to stop picking up beer cans and bottles because I ran out of time and had to go do other things. I mean, you know, it, it's, it's, it's not a good situation. But, you know, as was mentioned by one of our residents here at a previous meeting, Jamaica Beach property owners need to decide what kind of city we want to be in the future. And start taking actions to accomplish that. Thank you.
Okay, on to, um, announcements. I know it's far in the future, but like y'all can keep on your radar screen that Jamaica Beach is sponsoring the Polar Plunge for Special Olympics. So, this is kind of like the MS-150. You get sponsors and they sponsor you to, to go dive in the ocean in January. It's a great, it's a great fundraising tool for a great program, so, uh, get your bathing suits ready. Okay, now we have reports from directors. Police Chief Garabate's report is attached. And at this time, Lieutenant Posey is gonna come up and fill us in on some of the reserve activity going on.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, like Mayor said, my name's Lieutenant Posey. I'm with Jamaica Beach Police Department. And, uh, the mayor's asked me to speak on the Reserve Department here.
Do I have to turn around? You can turn around.
Uh, I'll turn around and talk to y'all. The reserve program is pretty near and dear to my heart. I started here in Jamaica Beach as a reserve and moved my way part-time to full-time and now I'm a lieutenant here at Jamaica Beach. We, just recently, we just swore in three new officers. And I'll kind of talk about what we're doing now on our reserve program. As you see on the beach, we have reserve officers go up and down the beach enforcing city warrants violations and stuff like that for glass on beach and animals at large. But our new hires that we recently just hired have specific job duties. Uh, we just hired Officer Erickson. He is, um, coming from us from the University of St. Thomas with a background in evidence collection and evidence management. Um, so he's helping out Corporal Ferretan in the back with, uh, our evidence here at the police department. Not that we have a lot, but, you know, it helps us get in line with the state. Uh, we also, uh, hired Officer Schimmick, Officer Martinez, Officer Hemberg, and they will help backfill patrol because they are patrol qualified from other cities. And this is, this will help utilize if one of my officers gets sick and that way we don't have to pay part-time officers. We can actually use them, uh, to backfill any needs of the department. And then, um, Officer Clayton, he is a T-COLE instructor. And this is actually good for the department because we can actually hold classes here in Jamaica Beach for other departments to come and they'll pay the city of Jamaica Beach to attend the classes that we put on for our, uh, for all the officers here to get T-COLE certified and different things like crime team investigation, uh, latent prints and so forth. But, kind of like I said earlier, our recent batch of new hires are all being hired for specific needs for the department. You know, um, backfill patrol, uh, events collection, T-COLE instructor. We also have in the works, we're doing a background right now for, uh, an officer. His name is Officer Annalise. He's handling with a lot of background in grant writing, which will help not only the department, but help the city getting grants for the city and the police department so we can have, build up our, um, uniform, the uniforms and, uh, for vehicles, for high-water rescue vehicles and so forth that would not come out of the PD budget. But like I said earlier, I started as a reserve, reserve program senior near my heart and I want to continue that with the mayor's approval to get new people in here to help grow the department the way we want to.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, um, Director of Operations, Robert Quintero. Quintero, his report is attached as well. Uh, he's not here today. Um, does anybody have any questions on his report or comments? No? Alright. So, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the last meeting, meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor of approving last minutes?
Aye.
Esther, gee, that's unanimous. Okay, next, um, do we have, um, reports from council? Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended, um, our Jamaica Beach Police Department fundraiser last weekend. It was well-attended and everyone had fun watching the officers. You guys are a group, great. You did a great job. Um, it was really fun, um, watching the poor officers being, um, dunked in the water dunking machine. Even Mayor Bauer took a turn and raised several hundred dollars by taking that plunge. I want to thank our police officers and the Bistro for organizing this city event. I hope we can do it again next year. And, um, a few things that you didn't mention, I'm gonna mention is, uh, there's, uh, the first annual Citizens Police Academy classes. Um, they begin September twelfth. Um, I've already signed up, so I hope other people do. It's gonna, it, it, I, I, I've talked to Chief about what he's planning on doing and I'm really excited for this. So, um, consider signing up. Also, the Galveston County Community Emergency Response Team, CERT Academy, will be starting September fifteenth. I plan on being there for that too. I'm already certified, but I think this would be a great refresher. So, anybody that's planning on or would want to volunteer in a disaster and have the education behind you so that you could volunteer during a disaster, this is a great opportunity to, to learn how to do that, how to do search and rescue, how to do triage for medical, um, situations you could, just in your own family, um, happen. Um, I, we learned how to use a fire extinguisher in the last one, something I've never done before, so. And it's a lot of fun. And to the chief, I want to thank our police department for sharing the police reports every month in the agenda packets. Many tell me that they feel better informed with the work that our officers are doing to protect and serve the city. A few weeks ago, there was talk on social media about the Marina Light not working. So, I contacted Rob, our Director of Operations, and let him know. Yesterday, it was posted on the city Facebook page that Marina Light had been fixed. I went over at eleven o'clock at night, took a video, and yeah, it was fixed. Looks pretty good. I also contacted Mr. Quintero about some water leaks that were reported to me in the city and some meter covers that were missing. So, I rechecked those and noticed that the meter covers are already fixed or replaced. But, um, I'd like to know about those, um, water leaks when, when they have, when they have a chance. I know we have many. Also, I noticed that the main ditch, uh, near, the main ditch, um, and the ditches near the city pool have been cleaned out and the weeds removed. They look, haven't looked this good in years. The corner, Jolly Roger and Buccaneer Dishes have been cleaned out too. Jeff Jordan, who passed away a few years ago, lived at that corner and he asked the years, the, the city for probably ten years to clean out those ditches in front of his home. He would be so happy to see that that was finally done. Many have told me that our city is looking better and better than it has in a long time, but we still have some work to do and, Mayor, I appreciate that work. I have a magnet on my fridge that talks about housework, but I'm gonna change it a little bit and say, "City maintenance is something that no one notices unless it's not done." I hope we can continue keeping Jamaica Beach beautiful, include more projects and better enforcement of ordinances. At the direction of Ma- Mayor Bauer, who's been busy with the budget, I spoke to FEMA, the Salvation Army, State, our State Senator Mace Middleton's office, Representative Terry Leo Wilson's office, and Judge Mark, Judge Mark Henry's office. The mayor's idea is to be proactive, to remind them if needed that our city is offering City Hall again, like we did after Ike, to be a command post for the west end of the island in the event of a hurricane or a disaster event. Also, with permission from the mayor, I've invited Sally Backo, who is the, on the Governor's Committee for the Dune and Beach Projects, to come to council and explain the upcoming projects, Ms. Backo, that will affect our city and the entire west end of the island. Ms. Backo has suggested a date and I emailed the mayor with that.
On the agenda.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. Last, well, not quite, but last I asked Mayor Bauer if, if I could monitor her and Esther um, working on the budget for the next year. I spent several hours with them and just watched. Incredible job, you guys. And, and you guys just work so well together. But I feel more informed and understand the budget, budget better than I ever have. I can't tell you how much I appreciate watching the process and watching you both work. I appreciate the many hours you both have invested in putting together this budget. And the last thing is, um, Jamaica Beach Hardware has offered to accept our, um, "Made in the USA" flags that need to be retired and there'll be a drop-off point along with my house and with City Hall. So, if you want to, um, join our Stars for Troops project, then you can drop them there, those three locations. And we have now, um, shared over five thousand flag stars with, um, veterans, active military, and our first responders. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Alderman Green?
Yeah, I don't really have anything. Just one thing. Our list station number seven project, uh, the base line is proceeding real well. And, uh, we should get through that early, maybe in two or three weeks. Been a minimum, um, disturbance and inconvenience for residents so far. They've done a very big job of that. And they kept it well fenced off from safety standpoint. So, hopefully we'll get through that early. And that is a big hurdle for us. Thank you.
Alderman Walsh?
I'd like to repeat something that Alderman Jones said, and that is,
How? Sorry, I'm not.
That is sorry. That is how good the city looks. I've been here twenty-three years now and I, I really do think it's the best. I've seen the parks and the ditches and everything else looking. And that goes to not just the folks in the city, but also all of our volunteers who know, uh, recognized and unrecognized. And I, I know I see Frank Sark out there on Jamaica Inn every night with his five-gallon bucket picking something up. And there are a lot of folks like him that, that do that work and, and don't get the recognition they deserve.
Thank you.
Dave also will. Thank you. I don't need to say anything else.
Okay, alright, next item on the agenda under new business is, uh, discussion and consideration of possibly take action. Approving resolution twenty-twenty-three dash oh-nine, establishing guidelines for volunteer engagement in the city of Jamaica Beach. Um, we brought this up last time. We added a liability waiver that includes, um, language that protects the city. So, do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, so, um, I mean, basically, we, uh, I, I actually apologize, the liability waiver was not included in last week's, but after, after the discussion from the last meeting, I did speak with legal again and they strengthened up the language around, um, potential exposure to confidential information. So, once again, it specifies that, um, every volunteer will have a, or, or volunteer effort will have a liaison assigned from city council and there will be a staff person also assigned to that volunteer effort. And, um, as we've talked to staff about that, that, that provides two things. It provides staff the avenue to say, to, to go to council, uh, or, or within staff as well, just to say, hey, I'm not comfortable with what's going on. Or also, as we all know, sometimes volunteers are more work than they are, uh, actual progress. So, uh, sometimes it takes more time to babysit the volunteer, but the volunteer can actually produce for the city. So, with a staff member and a council liaison, um, that, that should provide the checks and balances that the volunteer is actually delivering what they, they say they're gonna deliver. Okay, um, discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. I volunteered for this city for a long time. And, um, I'll be damned if I have to ask Santa Claus to sign a waiver. But he's volunteered. So, there's gonna be situations where they're not gonna be signing this. And so, I'm gonna suggest that possibly people that are working with staff here at City Hall, um, or boards, park board would have been one. Uh, but we don't have a park board currently, any committees or commissions. We could ask that, suggest that they sign this. Um, they would be, um, um, more, um, some public information may not be available or, or might be available to them and not to the public. But most information is going to be public. We have a, uh, an open government. So, and the, the only things I can think of is personnel files and some police files, investigations and such that are not going to be public information. But I do like the language of this for boards, committees, and commissions because someone who's volunteering for Memorial Day or for Easter or Christmas isn't going, isn't gonna need this. Um, and people who walk around, pick up garbage, they don't need this. So, I think we need to kind of decide where are we gonna limit it.
What she said.
So, the, the suggestion would be on the resolution, we specify that this, or we change the title, that this is volunteer engagement for, I'm looking all up, uh, engagement in the city of Jamaica Beach for, um,
Boards?
Office activities? Boards and commissions?
Committees and commissions.
And maintenance projects. Like if they volunteer to examine one of the lift stations.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's a good reason, yeah.
Okay, so, if we change the title, are you okay with the body of the resolution and the liability waiver?
I haven't really had time to look at it a whole lot. I'm slow. So, I mean, you know, I don't know if we need longer to read it. I print most of it.
So, um, the recommendation can either be to change the title and vote on it as is or we can bring it back to council next time. Do I have a motion to accept with title change? Or do I have a motion to table and bring it back next time?
Motion to table. When we do legal things, they need to be correct.
As voted on. Okay, I'm, I mean, I'm fine with that.
What legal claims are in your address?
This, this is, I'm sorry, this is a resolution. It's binding. This, this waiver and release of volunteer, they're binding, so the whole packet has to read how it's supposed to read.
Okay, we'll change, we'll change.
Well, if I change the title, we could.
I'm, I'm sorry. I want to, not for me. I'm gonna be a stickler that we do things that we're going to have a resolution, that it's titled correctly, that it's filled out correctly, and that all Ts and Is are taken care of.
Oh, I'm, okay, so we have a motion to table and amend the resolution title to, in, to specify that it's for staff activity, right?
Specify, which can be applicable to.
Yes, office activities, parks, boards, commissions, committees, and, um,
Maintenance.
City maintenance.
City maintenance activities. Okay, we can change the title or we can put in the first section that it pertains to.
Yeah, I think it's better to put it in where this pertains to.
Yes, I agree. Alright, do we have a second to table for those additions?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of tabling and bringing it back with suggestion additions? Alright. On to the next agenda item. So, the, the next item is only on, um, discussion only, not voting on. Um, this is just so the public and city council could see what we're proposing on a trash ordinance. Uh, the intent would be to vote on this next time. And, and as we've been in the practice of doing, after council discusses it, we'll also open it up for any, any additional public comments on what they might see. So, do I have a motion to discuss, uh, the modifications to ordinance twenty-nineteen dash one?
I'll make a motion.
Alright, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, so, I, I think most of us have seen this ordinance before. It is raising the rate to fifteen dollars versus the twelve nineteen we've been paying. It also, uh, specifies the maximum size of sixty-four gallon receptacle. The previous ordinance had thirty gallons, so just so you know, all of y'all were out of compliance for the last three or four years because I haven't seen many thirty-gallon receptacles out there. The other thing is a, uh,
And then it, and it limits how many?
Uh, yes, it limits to four, to four receptacles and that can also be a black trash bag. The other thing it does is, um, it, it specifies that all white trash bags have to be in a trash receptacle with a closed-fitting lid. So, um,
Not visible.
Not visible. So, they have to be inside a receptacle. And then it also specifies that, um, let me find where it is in here. It does add that under the recycling, that glass is allowed, should be emptied and rinsed clean. That wasn't specified in the other contract and that in the, in the contract, the previous ordinance. And it, where does it show it? Uh, it's the exact same for brush. So, if you have palm fronds or, or green garbage, it needs to be bundled and can't weigh more than fifty pounds or be in excess of four feet long. That's the same as in the contract before or in the ordinance before. So, the biggest changes though really are that, this, this piece right here. All white trash bags shall be placed in receptacles with tight-fitting lids so that no white trash bag is visible. Alternatively, black plastic bags customarily used for disposal with sufficient thickness to prevent destruction by animals shall be permissible. So, um, and four trash containers. Alright, do we have any discussion on it?
Question, when we say trash containers, I think they mentioned this last time, but what about, uh, black contractors that, you know, those be?
That's the one she's talking about.
That's considered a container?
Accessible.
Yes, yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yes, so, so four containers to be picked up. You can have four big contractor bags out there. They can't exceed fifty pounds. Uh, nothing can exceed fifty pounds. That, uh, can be four trash cans. It can be a combination of the, the, between them. One thing I know they are tightening down on a bit though is we've never, they, they've never been contracted to pick up construction debris. They have very nicely picked up a lot of it over the last several years. But I've heard from people who, who have some remodeling, minor remodeling projects and stuff going on that they're kind of cracking down on that. So, um, something I'll talk to Robert about is maybe trying to have a few more days where we bring in big dumpsters. where we bring in big dumpsters, um, from the city to provide, um, people to get rid of their construction debris. So, any other discussion by council? Any other comments?
Mayor?
Oh, yeah.
Um, the other night, three o'clock in the morning, I started thinking about this trash. And I had a couple people ask me about, um, this two dollar and eighty-one cent raise in prices. That, um, and some were like, this isn't fair. And so I thought, I'm gonna go look and, and see what other cities are charging. Galveston charges twenty-four ninety-seven a month. Texas City's twenty-four dollars a month. Lee City's twenty dollars eighty-four cents a month. Dallas is thirty-five eighty-one cents a month. Chicago, I was just Googling, nine dollars and fifty cents a month. San Antonio was the most interesting. San Antonio charges per cart, sixty-four, you know, is the large cart. They, and that's thirty dollars and twenty-five cents per cart. Nineteen seventy-six for a medium sized cart, fourteen seventy-six for a smaller cart. Plus, they have an environmental fee. So just to let you guys know, I think fifteen dollars a month for what we get to twice a week, we are, we need to keep these guys happy. Thank you.
All right, any other comments from council?
It looks like it is in agreement with the contract.
Thank you. It is.
There's not an inword, it's not.
Yes. Any comments from citizens? Nope, okay. Um, the, the plan is to break this forward for approval at the next meeting. So, um, if anybody has any comments or concerns, we still have three weeks, I think, this time, between us, between this one and next council meeting, um, to bring forward any additional concerns or modifications. Okay, moving on to the, the next item is to go over, uh, once again, it's, it's just more discussion on our budget. So we had a budget workshop last time, and, um... A few tweaks were made from the one presented last time. We added some funds for the, um, park fence. Um, I forgot to add, uh, garbage tax for the portion the city's paying. So in the past, the citizens were actually in their monthly payment, paying for all of the dumpsters that the city has picked up on a routine basis, the one by City Hall, the ones on the beach. And so we, we pulled those fees out, also the big, big trash cans out by the park. Um, we pulled those out so that they're, they're not, we pay for them as a separate bill now. And I forgot to add sales tax to that portion of the fee. So that was added, um...
And it's, and it's paid out of what? Is it paid out of hot tax now?
Um, the beach portion is.
The beach portion is.
Yeah, yeah, the City Hall portion isn't. Um, what else did we add, Esther?
Fire.
Uh, yes, we have a donated fire hydrant, and, uh, it's been sitting in the shop, getting moved and possibly damaged. It needs to be installed. So, uh, Chief Baden helped us identify a location for that, and Branch is gonna go on and put that in. Um, so we added that.
CDAC.
And then, um...
The ACs.
Yes, um, we also added a portion in the budget. Um, as I mentioned last time, we discovered that the police, uh, area of the building, their AC is very degraded and mold is growing. So, we added, uh, money to expedite getting that duct work clean and, uh, updated so that we're no longer creating mold for our officers to deal with. So that was added, but that's actually in wrapping up from this year's budget, uh, not moving into next year's budget. Um, the other item I will be adding to the budget that came to our attention this week is the, the software program that the police use for writing tickets and keeping all of their information. There's like five different software types of platforms that they use to do their job. That contract is expiring in March. Um, we actually thought we had a seven-year contract. We have a five-year contract. Uh, when we went and dug into the details, that expires in March. And so at this point, since it just came to our attention this week, um, we, we're going to investigate using different platforms that communicate with our court system more efficiently. And, um, so we don't, we don't have a good price yet. But looking at the old dollars that we spent and then kind of ramping them up to current dollars, uh, we're adding thirty thousand dollars to the police budget. Uh, and that will be an ongoing annual cost unless we can negotiate a longer length, uh, contract. And here again, that's very much an estimate at this point, um, but it needs to be in the budget so we can keep our police force working next year. So those are the, the additions versus what was presented at the budget meeting last week. So do I have a motion to discuss this budget?
I'll make that motion to discuss.
One second.
All right, council have any input after having let it have soak time?
Just on, on the new item, and, uh, just a, a question. Is, is there a way we could qualify for, for, police, um, qualify for a grant to modernize our software?
Yes, and we will. We will look into that. Um, it was grant money that helped pay for it last time. And, um, as, as Lieutenant Posey indicated, uh, they are, uh, doing a background check on a reserve officer that has experience with that. And he will be doing that in his off time on, on a volunteer basis for the city, 'cause the reserves don't get paid, uh, in helping us identify grants.
So I guess, as you're looking at all these different softwares, as you mentioned, you were thinking about getting one that would communicate with the, the police department. That's one of the reasons we had a problem with our, uh, with doing the, uh, our end of the year audit, because I couldn't find, everything was so hard to find. None of the, none of the numbers were together. So that's a thing that we'll be looking at too, correct?
Yes, yes.
Trying to get them all in line.
Yes.
Where they're all close to each other.
Yes.
You can hit a button and it all comes out.
Yes. Uh, right now, it's fairly convoluted on how the court system, uh, works. It's, uh, to, to generate the report and you get, oh my God, what are there, seventeen line items on all the different places the money goes, and, uh, it's kind of hard to predict how much we're gonna actually pay to collection agencies. It's actually not us that pays. The collection agency is actually the defendant that pays. It gets added thirty percent, by the way, you guys, if you don't pay the ticket on time, there's a automatic thirty percent addition and it goes to collection. So the collection gets that thirty percent. We still get the same amount of ticket, but it, uh, makes it challenging to track with any accuracy what you're gonna pay to collection. And, and Esther and I have been looking, um, we're planning on moving to QuickBooks Live, which puts it in a cloud-based platform and allows more functionality. But we're also spending a little bit of time looking at alternate platforms. Um, QuickBooks really isn't designed well for the type of budget we operate. Uh, it's more designed for a small business, and it's, it's not the best for what we do. But, um, but it's that, it's that challenge you have in going from one system to another system. And there's always hiccups, and the, the, the staff is a bit challenged right now to get it all straight with existing systems. So yes, we are doing that, buddy, hoping for better communication. Uh, that's, that's definitely on the list. What other comments do we have from council now?
I, I just wanna say, Esther and Mayor, again, you know, this one, the lines match up. So it's easy to read. It's actual, projected, and this current budget and the proposed budget. And, um, things have been clarified. Things have been separated out a little bit. Marvelous job. Thank you so much.
Um, also, I'd like to point out, at the next, at the next meeting, we will do, we, we will be doing our public hearing on both the budget and the proposed tax rate. And speaking to our tax rate, our tax rate is actually going down about twenty-five percent. So, uh, because our appraisals have gone up. But the current budget, uh, due to all of the water line issues we have and the sewer plant issues we have, um, I am requesting that we collect an extra three point five percent in, in actual dollars to the city, which is the maximum allowed, amount allowed by state law without going to the voters. But the tax rate actually goes down twenty-five percent. Um, and, and also, I, um, wasn't elected in time. We have to, um, I would like to propose that we do offer homestead exemption to, for next year's budget. But, um, we have to, actually have to pass that by ordinance. And it has to be passed in the, in the timeframe that allows the appraisal district to incorporate it into their projections. So we actually need to do that in about March of next year. So it'll be on the agenda, and, uh, you know, I'll be having conversations with GCAD before that to make sure that we understand the impact to us on taxes with that. Um, also, I'll be going forward for a budget amendment at the next one. I was hoping to have that ready to go this time. Um, unfortunately, there's a lot of varying opinions out there on how detailed that, that budget amendment needs to be. And I'm, I'm, I had different reviews from legal, different reviews from, uh, people with past city administration and city secretary experience. So I'm waiting for enlightenment on, do I need to just do an amendment to the bottom budget line item? Or do I have to go do a budget amendment, uh, code by code? Um, but by next meeting, we will bring that forward.
What is our CPA slash other city?
Uh, I actually haven't spoken to Maxwell and Overbeck yet. Uh, I will, I will be doing that, uh, along with, I haven't contacted our TML Legal. Uh, that's Texas Municipal League, and we pay, we pay quarterly fees to them, and they, they help us stay abreast of latest guidelines and requirements. Okay, do we, yes, go?
One little thing.
Oh.
Um, I'd like to speak about our holiday event, and I know I mentioned this to you before. Last year, I volunteered for a couple of those. So, uh, our, our, our Christmas decorations, um, they're, they're used and rang. We really need to look at, and, and even maybe, David, think about maybe a special committee, you know, just to look at this. I mean, I know we have, the way we work, and I know we have these established volunteers and everything, but I think we need to really take a hard look and grow with that. I mean, our, our, our Christmas holiday event was really great. We struggled to put it together last year. It was touch and go. Um, the Easter thing, same way. Oh, and these things are very successful. I mean, we get a tremendous turnout, and I just think somehow in this budget, maybe we can come up with some dollars to make sure that we get, you know, new, better, better decorations and, um, you know, out there, it's even difficult. There's, there's not the right electrical connection, there's not the right things to hang stuff. We added a lot of stuff. We went to the hardware stores and bought it. But I would just like to suggest that, you know, it's, it's the face of our community.
Yep.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Um, any, any?
Question, this is something, are donations to the park considered tax deductible?
I don't think so, but I don't know. I will get clarity from that from both our officers.
They are, there's something I can hit up.
I, I don't think so. Does anybody know the answer to that?
Well, this is what, this, this is what I was told when I worked at the park board, that, um, because the city is a C-three organization, and we worked under the umbrella of the, the, um, the city, then, um, park donations were tax deductible. That, um, if anyone wanted a receipt for them, to contact the city secretary, and she would write out a receipt. So, um, as I understood it, they've always been tax deductible.
Okay, I, uh, I'll verify that.
Let's verify that. I, I know exactly the, uh...
Awesome, awesome. Okay, well, um, open up comments to the public on the budget. Um, I know some of y'all prepared last week. Maybe you had a few more times to see it between two different agenda postings. Any other comments, concerns? All right, well, since it was just discussion, we don't have to vote on a motion to, to do anything with this. It was just discussion. So moving on to the next one, um... This is, uh, consider for action, calling a public hearing on the city of Jamaica Beach proposed budgets for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, to be held on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, at six P M. at City Hall. And do I have a motion to, basically, I mean, we just go straight to motion to approve to hold that public meeting?
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, calling a public hearing on the city of Jamaica Beach proposed budgets for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, to be held on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that. Okay, uh, all in favor of calling a special public hearing meeting on? All right, all in favor? Okay, on the mayor's report, um, let's see, um... First of all, we, I think I filled in on QuickBooks. Uh, we've talked about different software, uh, short-term rentals. Uh, on the September fourteenth meeting, we're hoping to have a draft ordinance together. We've talked about the fact that, uh, we are gonna propose occupancy limits that, uh, that then will align. Esther's, I mean, Esther Tina has been working super diligently on getting our software up to date. Uh, we're working on plans for that. We are also proposing a greater registration fee for the STRs, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars annually. Uh, we've been working with the software company on what it's gonna take to implement that, uh, if the ordinance gets passed. Um, but, but basically, on, on the occupancy, we, we need to get a, a handle on, on some of these small houses that are holding too many people. So basically, the ordinance is gonna specify, um, we're still debating on, is it gonna be two plus two or two plus four? What that means is two people per permitted GCAD listed bedroom. And, and then are we gonna allow two, two more people or four more people beyond that? Um, but that will be coming forth. And if any of y'all have any comments on, do you want it two or do you want it four? Uh, we're all available to listen.
Is that two per bedroom?
Yes.
Or two per unit, per house?
No, two per bedroom, and then however many, like, you have a three-bedroom house, that's six.
Six.
And then you either do plus two or plus four. So that means a three-bedroom house would either hold eight people or ten people. But the ordinance will also state that it has to be GCAD taxed square footage, uh, that accommodates those bedrooms. So if you have areas on your lower floor that you're not paying tax on, um, you don't, you won't get to, um, list and advertise occupancy in those rooms. Now, we've talked about the police can't go knock on a door and count beds and beds, but, but we can limit what they advertise, and we can limit, uh, what, yeah, what they advertise. So that, that's gonna be there on the fourteenth. Here again, the fourteenth will be for discussion, and then we'll look at voting on it on the twenty-eighth. If, you know, based on input from citizens on the fourteenth. Um, on leaks, there is a leak on Tony Roger. Uh, it was fixed in this, previously, um, it was not fixed. It was, the instruction was given to just make it work. It wasn't fixed. So, uh, is that the one that's bubbling up over there? Yeah, at, at Anchor's Way and, uh, Jolly Roger against the state park. Uh, so Branch has been giving the instruction to order the right three valves it's going to take, because there's multiple tee offs from there, it's where the six inch fire hydrant line comes down and then, and then tees off. But, but, um, I'm asking city for a little patience. Right now, we want to get that Bayside Lift Station finished, and also Jolly Roger. All of Jolly Roger is going to have to be without water for three or four hours. So, we're trying to do it kind of in the middle of the week, maybe once we're past the worst of the summer season.
Right, Jolly Roger in the streets coming up there, or?
No, no, it's just down Jolly Roger.
It's down J R.
Yes, so, um, we, we should be getting that scheduled next week or the week after that. So, once again, I'm asking for the city's patience, it's not a gusher, um, it's more than a drip. It's kind of a trickle. And, um, we met with a group yesterday on new water meter boxes that are of a, a heavy, heavier durability. So we're switching the type of lids we use. Uh, now they're, they're made with a special resin, so they're denser than water. So, um, they won't float, uh, and they have special attachments that allow our electronic meters to be read, uh, better. So, hopefully, we won't be picking up as many boxes out of the ditches, they're heavier duty. So, if you go over them with your lawnmower or a car runs over them, you know, right now, when we do that, they're in multiple pieces. So, um, we spend a lot of money on water meter lids, because they end up in the bay. So, um, that should help. We talked, uh, talked about the Bayside Lift Project. Uh, we've been working really hard within the city, having lots of meetings, and doing a lot of our emergency preparedness for hurricane. So, um, we've made evacuation plans, we've made plans for city hall on where we will evacuate, and what conditions we're evacuate, we're in line at the Galveston on what we're doing. So, once again, everybody have your go bag ready, and, you know, make sure your blackboard information is up to date, um, because that is the way that the city will communicate with you the most. And we'll be in alignment with Galveston if an evacuation is called for. Um, and I've said it before, I'll say it again, um, both the county and Galveston City and our little community are in alignment that if a storm comes trudging this way and it's pointing towards us, we will call evacuation probably about twelve hours earlier than we would in the past, because all the roads out of here are under construction. Every single road out of here is under construction. So, uh, it's a, it's a concern on getting everybody where they need to be. And then, um, the other thing, talking about volunteers and city events, Sandy Denby continues to do a fabulous job of heading up our park events, she's already planning for our Halloween party. I think it's, um, October, what's this Saturday, the twenty-eighth? Anyway, we've also been in discussion with the P D, and that's when we're going to do our national hideout. Um, that's when we usually do our national hideout, it was a great success last year. Uh, Chief Garavay did a wonderful job, um, bringing all of his officers out to meet us. So, please put that on your calendars that Saturday night, watch the little ones have fun, and, um, and get to meet all your officers and the majority of your reserve officers. Okay, um, that is all I have on my mayor's report. At, at this point, um, we're going to go into executive session. Um, we have a couple of personnel matters to discuss and a couple of security issues to discuss. So, I, I need to ask you all to leave. Um, the discussion could take ten to fifteen minutes. Um, when we get, get back, if we need to, to make any action or vote on anything discussed, in that executive session, we'll do that, and, and then we'll adjourn.